Okey dokey. So, let's see here. I got this wire here. Oh, I don't? Okay. Okey dokey. Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay, am I out here? Where's me? Uh, you need to promote him? All righty. Okay. Well, good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see people right here in the room, and it's so nice to see people uh on the screen. Welcome, everyone. I call the meeting of June 9th, 2020, to order. And, uh, may I ask, uh, Member Greg Hart, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing, uh, as we'll go right into invocation? Greg Hart?
America. The Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm delighted to introduce Catherine List. She's the Assistant Chaplain with Just of DuPage to lead us in invocation.
Good morning. Um, would you please bow your heads? Let us offer a moment of silence for those who are fighting COVID-19 and to the many lives lost from it. In spite of being in these difficult times, we are grateful for many and abundant blessings. For life itself, our loved ones and friendships, the roofs over our heads, the food we eat, the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant us a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, as well as a keen thirst for justice and rightness. Help us to work together in unity with confidence in what is good and fitting in the agenda that is set before us today. Help us to use our power to advance the common good with humility, mercy, and justice. To bring about good for not only this county, but also for our state and as well for our country. Amen.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. As we get ready to call the roll call, I am advised to pass on this advisory to all the board members, and that is, please, uh, only turn on your microphone when called by the clerk and then turn it off immediately. And with that, uh, Mr. Clerk, Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Here? I can't hear. Here?
I can't hear the clerk. He's on mute.
I'm here. Turn on your mic, Adam. Use your red mic. There you go. Elliott?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
Kuduski?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Noonan?
Here.
Ozog?
Here.
Pachowski?
Here.
Renahan?
Here.
Rutledge?
Here.
Selman?
Here.
Tornatori?
Here.
Zay?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. Uh, on our Chairman's Report, um, first and foremost, I'd like to, um, welcome some guests here, and I want to, um, acknowledge Greg Hart and Dawn DeSart as two board members that, uh, that wanted to bring this recognition and this proclamation here. Uh, it is LGBTQ Pride Month, and, um, I'd like to, uh, ask our guests, uh, we have Margaret Donahue and Don Donahue, I think, right? So, would you want to please stand here on my right? And then we also have Stephen, um, Kosak, uh, if you'd mind standing. So, I'd just like to, uh, in this moment of pandemic and social distancing, ordinarily, we'd be gathered at the podium, and we'd stand close together and take pictures and invite Member DeSart and Member Hart up to join us, but today, we're gonna try to replicate that as best as we can. We, we mark Pride Month in DuPage County, and we're pleased to welcome our two board members, Greg Hart and Dawn DeSart, to help present our LGBTQ Pride Proclamation to Margaret Donahue, uh, of parents, families, and friends of lesbians and gays, um, DuPage, and Stephen of Napier Pride. So, we've been talking so much lately about the importance of creating a diverse and welcoming county. A very fruitful, uh, conversation. I believe the timing couldn't be better to support our LGBTQ community. So, please allow me to read the proclamation and provide some context for Pride Month, and then I'll ask, uh, board members, uh, well, first, I'll ask our guests to share a few thoughts, and then, um, uh, board members, if they want to weigh in on it. So, the proclamation goes as follows. Here it is. "Whereas DuPage County has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and the County Board is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality for all people in the community. And whereas DuPage County accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and beliefs and recognizes, we must continue to educate all to bring awareness of prejudice and discrimination. And whereas members of the LGBTQ community are vital members of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. And whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated every year during June to honor the 1969 Stonewall Riots in New York City, where members of the LGBTQ community gathered at the Stonewall Inn to protest, uh, discriminatory laws and practices which started a national movement. And whereas, to this day, groups continue to advocate for the rights of the LGBTQ community and work to advance, uh, advance equitable treatment of the community and our valued members of our DuPage County community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, and members of the County Board do hereby recognize June 2020 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Invite all county residents to reflect on the ways we can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding." I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Approve this ninth day of June 2020. And, uh, thank you. Marvelous. Why don't we ask the Donahues? Why don't we have the Donahues take a, take a turn there and...
Good morning. On behalf of PFLAG DuPage, I am honored to accept this proclamation designating June as Pride Month in DuPage County. PFLAG, a support organization advocating for LGBTQ plus people, their families, and allies, was founded in 1973 after Jean Manford publicly supported her gay son at Stonewall, a demonstration much like we are seeing in the news today. LGBTQ rights are human rights. Every parent wishes for equal opportunity and protection under the law for their children, whether they are black, brown, white, or rainbow. In this year, when many pride celebrations and fundraisers have been put on hold, DuPage County's recognition is an important statement of its commitment to support education and advocacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's awesome. Stephen?
Um, on behalf of Napier Pride, I'd like to accept, uh, this proclamation on behalf of, or from DuPage County. Um, it's very important for us to remember that while same-sex marriage was legalized, um, in 2015, there's still a lot of work to be done, um, locally, statewide, federally. Um, just last week, my fiancee and I worked unite services for our flowers for our wedding, um, coming up in the state of Alaska. So, um, you know, having, uh, a county that supports the LGBTQ community and wants to promote acceptance and diversity among the community, um, it's really important to keep, to push that and keep in mind that there's still a lot of work to be done. So, this is a really important step, and Napier Pride is humbled to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, um, on the order of Chairman's remarks. Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Member DeSart.
Oh, forgive me. Yes, we want to open it up to board members. Forgive me.
Member DeSart had asked me, uh, 'cause she couldn't be here today to, uh, to speak on behalf of the proclamation, and I remember Hart would like to say a few words as well, too.
Yes.
And, uh, member DeSart would like to say a few words, too?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Please, proceed.
I just want to give credit to, to Stephen Kosak and, and, and the folks that are here on his behalf. It takes a lot to, to come out, and, uh, you know, we had, in my own family, my son came out about two years ago, my son Petey, who's a student at Pepperdine. And, um, I just want to tell, you know, any kids that are thinking of, should I tell my parents, or should I be, you know, come out as early as you can, uh, because I, I think parents are embracing this. I know we did as a family, and, uh, I know it's tough, um, but the earlier, the better, uh, because I think we all want to do whatever we can to help love our kids and support them through these, through, through this. And, um, so, you know, we have in my family a paramedic fireman who's gay, and my son, uh, who I respect and love, and, um, I, I just want to, you know, make sure that people realize in this county, we do embrace you and we love you, and, um, and, and we should have, you know, openness and, and not a closed-mindedness. So, the other thing I, I was educated, because my son educated me on Black Lives Matter, they started by, by saving gay black people back in the 60s. They had those very Stonewall riots. So, so here, here, um, a group that is now in, much in the news right now, uh, was, was defending gays. And, uh, uh, so, what, we, we cannot afford any discrimination in this country, whether it's gay, black, Mexican, Latino, whatever it might be, um, everybody is equal. And, um, so I just want to give that, uh, as I think a, a footnote as to what this, this proclamation is all about. So, thank you for having the courage to be who you are. God bless.
Thank you, Member DCNI. Uh, Member Greg Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chairman, for issuing this proclamation, uh, recognizing this month as LGBTQ Pride Month. Um, I think it further reinforces our county's position as an open, welcoming, and inclusive county, and that's very important to everyone on this board, including the Chairman, I know that. You know, I think what this shows is that when we acknowledge that all Americans are equal, we collectively are more free. And as we've sadly seen the last couple of weeks, even though progress has been made for LGBTQ rights, uh, we can go backwards if we don't fight for those rights every single day, and I think all of us on this board need to commit ourselves to that mission. Um, I also want to thank PFLAG, the Donahues, for being here. Uh, PFLAG is an organization that does incredible work in DuPage County. It actually was founded in my hometown of Hinsdale, um, and has since expanded to include the entire county, and I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do for this important community. We acknowledge all of the incredible accomplishments the LGBTQ community has given to us in DuPage County, and we thank you for being here. Also want to thank our representative from Napier Pride, as well, as well as numbers DeSart and Member DCNI. Thank you.
Thank you. Member DeSart?
Yeah, I just want to say, love is love, and the more we can love, uh, the stronger we all are. I'd like to thank, I've been a proud, um, member of the leadership team of Napier Pride for over a year now. I'd like to thank Stephen Kosak for coming in, um, Tommy Varela, uh, Margie Wolf, Ann Dempsey, Jill Whitledge, Jacob Kent, and all the leadership team of Napier Pride for giving, DuPage County, they gave us, they gifted us this, uh, pride flag, which I will bring in the next time I come to the, the 421 building, but I'd like to thank Napier Pride for gifting us this beautiful, huge flag that hopefully we can fly over the county. So, thank you, Stephen, for coming in. I wish I was there to hug you at socially distanced, but Napier Pride does amazing things. They're primarily a, a service organization. They were out there cleaning up after Naperville received damage after some, uh, some, some protests last week. They hold the Health and Wellness Fair every year, and next year, in 2021, they'll be hosting a large, um, Napier Pride Fest at, uh, um, at, uh, a park here in Naperville. So, they just do so many great things for our community, and I appreciate you all so much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeking recognition? Any other board member? Okay, well, this was awesome. Thank you so much for joining us today. It means a lot to us, and I appreciate the opportunity to project who we are, and we'll keep working on this issue, no doubt about it. Uh, moving into the order of Chairman's remarks, uh, let me just offer a couple of, uh, thoughts, please. It may be hard to believe, uh, but it was, uh, almost exactly a year ago at this time that we created a strategic imperative on diversity and inclusion. And as I told you in the letter I sent to the board last week, never, never has that work been more important than it is now. Uh, not only is June Pride Month, but it is Immigrant Heritage Month as well. Uh, as we acknowledge the many contributions of immigrants in the LGBTQ community, um, we must also acknowledge and embrace the diversity in our county. I believe it is a strength, which is why I, too, was outraged, outraged and sickened by the death of George Floyd. Um, and as, as I, I was angered by those also who took advantage of the pain and turned, uh, the peaceful protests to, to, to use it as an excuse to further violence and property damage, which I think caused even more pain and division, unfortunately. But as we seek to mend hearts and we strive to bridge the gaps that separate us, let us also acknowledge the work we've done and will continue to do here in DuPage County. I'd like to point out that our state's attorney and sheriff make significant investments in training their teams in effective crisis intervention and de-escalation techniques to promote peaceful interactions and nonviolent resolution. Uh, they have worked with the NAACP and Unity Partnership to support greater understanding and to erase negative stereotypes. Our own board member, uh, Sadiya Covert, uh, a state-certified law enforcement instructor, works hand-in-hand with the community to create positive outcomes and teach others about diversity and inclusion. Thank you to the leaders of our Complete Count Committee for embracing, um, this charge to devote an upcoming meeting to a dialogue on bridging gaps and developing some concrete, measurable, uh, uh, policies for improving minority participation, inclusion, and equality in all facets of county life. So, I look forward to hearing from that outstanding group. Thanks, uh, on another subject matter, thanks to our collaboration with the Governor's Office, the Illinois Department of Public Health and Emergency Management Agency. One week from today, DuPage County's COVID-19 drive-through testing site will be open to the public Tuesdays through Saturdays, right here on the county campus. Uh, the site will open June 16th at 7:00 a.m. and will remain open no later than 3:00 p.m. each day, but will close once testing supplies for the day are exhausted. Uh, anyone can be tested regardless of whether they have symptoms or not. The testing provided will tell you if you have a current infection. No appointment, no doctor referral, or no insurance is needed at the drive-through sites, and testing is available at no cost to the individual. The tests are administered using a nasal self-swab, and trained staff members will provide instructions to you to support collection of the sample. People must remain in their cars with the windows up to support safety of all persons at the testing site. Additional information will be available on our website and on the DuPage County Health Department website. Anyone with questions should review in greater detail, uh, this project on the DuPage County Health Department website at, um, dupagehealth.org, or call 630-221-7030. I'm also proud to announce that DuPage County Support will increase COVID testing capacity at the Anne M. Jeans School in unincorporated Willowbrook on 91st Street. Uh, in cooperation with Pillars Community Health, this site will now offer coronavirus testing two days a week aimed at low-income medically underserved populations. More information on this partnership will also be available on the county and health department websites. That testing is already underway, but we will be able to add an additional day of testing starting this week. Um, it is rewarding when the county's good work gets noticed, and it did just again recently. Last week, we learned, uh, that DuPage County, uh, has received a NACO Achievement Award for the County Ramp Up Program. Uh, NACO recognized the recovery and manufacturing a Path Up Program in the county, um, the Community and Economic Development category. That's their NACO category. The Ramp Up Program provides manufacturing certification training to individuals in recovery from opioid use and substance abuse, allowing them to obtain meaningful employment while also providing, uh, local employers with a distinct talent pool. Uh, the program began with a public-private partnership started by DuPage County's Workforce Development Division, Worknet DuPage, and the Heroin Opioid Prevention Education Task Force, the HOPE Task Force. Congratulations to our board members, Tim Elliott and Greg Hart, who fostered this program, along with our staff in multiple departments, including our Worknet Division, uh, who were really hands-on with the candidates and the employers. Um, efforts like this Ramp Up Program bring to mind the many contributions, um, frankly, of a, um, of a dear friend of mine, and I know he's a friend of, of many of you here, Will County Executive Larry Walsh, uh, who passed away, uh, last week at the age of 72. Uh, Larry was, uh, very passionate about combating opioid, uh, epidemic. He was a dedicated public servant who had a big heart, and he constantly worked to make positive impact on the people that he represented. He was my colleague both in the Illinois Senate and, uh, here in, uh, as a county chairman in Will, so he was my counterpart in Will. Um, he was a great guy. He was a down-to-earth guy. He was a farmer who never, ever forgot his roots. He always extended a hand. Uh, he constantly was devoted to doing the right thing, no matter the politics. Uh, I'm really honored to have known him. Uh, I hope he will join me in offering a prayer or a warm thought for Larry Walsh, who devoted his life to serving Will County and the people of Illinois. And with that, that concludes my, uh, Chairman's Report. We go to the Order of Business entitled Public Comment. Public comment, according to our rules, members of the public are afforded time to address the board. Um, we have accommodated that effort and that commitment. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes, nor shall the total time for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. And with that, I will talk, move to Mr. Connor McCarthy to proceed on this order of business. Can everyone hear me? Uh, first comment today is from Luann Hoffman in West Chicago on behalf of the Northwoods Homeowners Association, uh, with regards to henkeeping in DuPage County. Her comment states, "I think henkeeping should be allowed in unincorporated areas with half an acre of land. The sound of chickens is not offensive. It's a great learning experience for children. In the age of coronavirus, less trips to the store and being self-sufficient are all pluses." That concludes her comment. Second comment is from Philip Alcocer, A-L-C-O-C-E-R, of Glen Ellen. Henkeeping in the unincorporated DuPage County area. Uh, his comment, "I would like to support the change to permit henkeeping as a positive right, not a negative right, requiring approval. We should have a locally sourced solution for food insecurity from our backyards." Thank you. That concludes his comment. Next comment is from Bill Bemeister of West Chicago. Uh, it's regarding allowing hens. His comment states, "I would like to allow hens and chickens." That completes his comment. The next comment's from Dejana Lapcevic, L-A-P-C-E-V-I-C. Uh, it was regarding henkeeping in unincorporated DuPage County. Her comment states, "I apologize for sending the comment after the deadline. I'm hoping this will help. Our young family is moving to Bloomingdale, unincorporated area, in less than two months, and we were surprised to find out that henkeeping is not allowed. We are a young family in our 30s with three boys under, uh, 10, eight years old, who would love to learn about henkeeping in addition to a home vegetable garden. We hope that this will be changed, that we will be allowed to experience a part of our childhood together with our children. Sincerely, the Lapcevic family." That concludes their comment. Next comment is from Judy Syttsma, S-Y-T-S-M-A, uh, from Elmhurst. It's regarding the keeping of hens. Comment states, "Please reconsider limiting the options for people who have, who have hens. I am the neighbor of someone who keeps hens. Keeping of hens provides them with eggs. People are allowed to have dogs that bark, so I'm inclined to ask why they can't keep hens, whose noise is far less intrusive. I would suggest you wait to have this discussion and really investigate the impact of hens in DuPage County. Uh, for some of this, for some, this is cultural, and for some, this is enjoyment of the hens. Please make sure your motives are pure and your research is clear and factual." That concludes her comment. Next comment's from Rhonda Keysor, K-E-Y-S-O-R, of West Chicago. It's regarding, uh, henkeeping. Comment states, "I support homeowners being allowed to raise a limited number of hens in their own property." That concludes her comment. Next comment is from Hans Skilrud, S-K-I-L-L-R-U-D, of West Chicago. It's regarding hens. "People," parentheses, "like me," close parentheses, "move out of downtown Chicago to settle into our neighborhood and be, and be closer to nature. Raising chickens is one of the best ways to instill care and kindness into children. Chickens provide eggs which can feed a family, making our current economic state a bit less stressful. DuPage does a phenomenal job of creating an environment close with nature, from your parks to your trails. Nature is what drives people to this county. I'd imagine you'll see more people migrating to DuPage because of your continued efforts to incorporate nature into residents' lives. Please allow us to have our own chickens, and thanks for taking the time to listen to a fellow resident of this amazing county." That concludes Mr. Skilrud's comment. I have another comment from Mr. Skilrud, which appears to be identical to the first, so I'll just say ditto on that. The next comment is from Lori Vanderlei, uh, V-A-N-D-E-R-L-E-I, of, uh, Northwoods, Illinois. Uh, it's regarding the keeping of hens in unincorporated DuPage County. Uh, Ms. Vanderlei says, "I would like to request a review of the current policy regarding the possession and care of egg-laying chickens/poultry/fowl in DuPage County, specifically the unincorporated subdivision of Northwoods. It is understood that this will not include roosters and that the requirements for a well-maintained and appropriate shelter will be included. A few of the reasons that homeowners should be allowed a small number of hens, um, parentheses, three to eight, uh, include: Chickens are fun-friendly pets with educational value for children about where foods like eggs come from. Two, they can provide food security for poor families. Three, they lay healthier eggs compared to store-bought eggs. Four, they give gardeners high-quality fertilizer. Five, they control flies and other pests, not add to them, and dispose of weeds and kitchen scraps that otherwise might end up in the landfill. Common concerns to address: Noise: If you don't have roosters, chickens aren't noisy. Hens cluck and peep softly all day long, then go to bed at dusk and remain quiet all night. Smell: A small flock of four or five chickens will poop about as much as an average dog, and their coop won't smell if it is kept clean. This is where creating a good chicken law comes into play. If the law only allows chickens in a well-maintained coop, then a chicken owner with a messy, filthy, smelly coop is out of compliance and can be cited under the law. Predators: The sad fact that chickens are food, and dash, not just for humans, but foxes, coyotes, possums, raccoons, hawks, and sometimes neighboring dogs. Uh, it should be the responsibility of a chicken owner to keep his or her chickens safe from predators, just like it is for dog slash cat pet owners. And there is ample evidence available on how to do so, even though a careless owner may lose chickens to predators. I fail to see how this is a municipal problem, as it's not something that causes... Pardon me. Uh, I must be allergic to chickens. Uh, "It's not something that causes a nuisance to anyone except for the chicken owner. Please consider an adjustment to the current regulations to allow for the keeping of backyard chickens. Respectfully, Lori Vanderlei, V-A-N-D-E-R-L-E-I." Next comment is from Dawn Habada Albanese, H-A-B-A-D-A-Albanese, A-L-B-A-N-E-S-E, uh, of Robin Lane, somewhere in, in DuPage County. "Hens in DuPage County. We have neighbors who want to keep hens on their property, or we are in full support of them being able to do so. We often hear a rooster from another property, and it's quite charming. We enjoy the abundant wildlife of our community and also embrace residents keeping animals such as chickens or farm animals such as horses." That concludes, uh, Ms. Albanese's comments. Next comment is from Danata Kalnenaiti, K-A-L-N-E-N-A-I-T-E. Next comment is from Donata Kalnennaiti, K-A-L-N-E-N-A-I-T-E, of the Northwoods subdivision. It's regarding the DuPage henkeeping ordinance. Her comment states, "To whom this may concern, I am a resident of DuPage County, Illinois, and I'm fully and completely in favor of allowing DuPage County residents to keep hens. The following are the reasons why I am in support. One, in these uncertain times, more and more families are facing food insecurity, whether due to loss of work and income or inability to go to grocery stores for individuals who are allergic or immunocompromised. Keeping hens and using their eggs for food is a wonderful source of nutrition and will enable individuals to be more secure in their food availability. Two, all Americans should have the ability to raise their own food. The fact that we are not able to raise our own food infringes upon our property rights in this county. The rule of no hens is old, antiquated, and frankly, a bit ridiculous. It absolutely absurd that residents cannot grow their own food in this day and age. Hens are not loud, nor do they smell, nor are they a nuisance. The fact is that hens are quieter than dogs. Furthermore, with proper legislation requiring the placement of a henhouse further from other neighbors and requiring such henhouse to be cleaned will prevent any issues of annoyance, disease, or complaints. There's a right way to create legislation around this issue, but banning hens altogether is the wrong way to do it. My neighbor has a horse. I have the same size lot as him, but can't own a few quiet hens. The current legislation makes no sense and needs to be changed. I implore you to allow hens in our county. We can be responsible citizens and follow the rules, but the rules need to allow people to grow their own food and take care of their own families." That concludes her comment. Next comment is from Hannah Dracopoulos, D-R-A-C-O-P-O-U-L-O-S, of Wheaton. Her comment's regarding hens. Her comment states, "Many DuPage County municipalities have the right to keep hens. Unincorporated residents deserve that same right." That concludes her comment. I have a repeat comment from Ms. Dracopoulos, so I'll say ditto again on that. Next comment's from Jack Grove on chicken keeping. He's from Glen Ellen. "I would like to enter my support of allowing chickens to be kept in DuPage County, including all incorporated and unincorporated areas." Next comment is from Sandra Pufal, P-U-F-A-H-L, of Naperville. Amendments to allow hens on residential properties. Her statement says, "As I read through the proposal, my comments are here to address the regulations for considerations and the cons of having hens. Regulation two, allow by right. This proposal is the only option that includes all residents with 30-yard setback requirements to having hens enclosed at all times. It is restrictive enough to keep neighbors happy, and the sounds hens make have a lower decibel level than vocal dogs, who can run along property lines in a fenced setting. Regarding the list of cons, there are many organic ways to prevent rodents. Using mint, lavender, or rosemary in laying boxes and dust baths will naturally repel rodents and insects. Predators can also be repelled by burying hardware cloth or corrugated metal along the base of chicken runs. In addition, in an answer to cleaning coop, anyone who has dogs cleans up after them, so concerns about having a tidy coop is a moot point. If you invest in this endeavor, you will invest in husbandry that needed to be successful. Thank you for bringing this issue to committee." That concludes her comment. I have Keith Creston, who wishes Record of Attendance only to be issued, but does not provide a subject or a comment, only that he is part of the Lyle Woodridge Fire District. Next comment is from Tracy G., T-R-A-C-E-Y, just the name G. in Lombard. "As a district..." It's about hateful language by a board member. "As a District II resident, I would like to express my concern regarding District II Board Member Shawn Noonan supporting hateful and threatening comments from other citizens. He has shown on his public Facebook page that he not only supports vigilantism and violence, but also promotes it. Not only is Noonan a board member, but he is also a police officer for the Bloomingdale Police. I would encourage the DuPage County Board to look into Member Noonan's comments and its incongruence with the peaceful community we are trying to build." That concludes Tracy's comment. Next comment is from Kate Treadway, T-R-E-A-D-Way, the normal way. Subject is Shawn Noonan. "Shawn Noonan, who holds a seat on this board and several other positions of power in DuPage County, as well as being a law enforcement officer in Bloomingdale, has found to (like) inflammatory, violent, and downright dangerous comments on his Facebook page. As a citizen of DuPage County, this is alarming to me. Unless his behavior changes and he becomes open to education on this matter, he can and will be voted out of office in November. Please advise us to what will be done about this matter." That concludes Ms. Treadway's comment. Next comment is from Claire Goldenberg regarding Shawn Noonan. "Shawn Noonan, who currently works as a county board commissioner and is a Bloomingdale Police Officer, recently endorsed a citizen's comment that protesters should be shot and left for dead in the streets by giving it a thumbs up on Facebook. No DuPage Commissioner should publicly endorse this type of violence. I demand the DuPage County Board Commissioners put out a statement condemning those who call for violence to be taken on peaceful protesters, and that you take action against Shawn Noonan for suggesting that it would be okay." Next comment is from Talah Clower, T-A-L-A-Clower, C-L-O-W-E-R, of Lombard. Citizen complaint regarding Shawn Noonan. "County Board Commissioner Shawn Noonan recently endorsed violence against civilians on his public Facebook. On May 30, 2020, Member Noonan posted a link to a Chicago Police scanner on his public Facebook page. Under that link, a Frank C. commented, quote, 'Shawn, as awful as it sounds, until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the streets for the wolves, there is no message law-abiding people and the other officers that protect them can send to these terrorists to instill fear and good behavior in them.'" It looks like it's an ellipsis. That concludes the quote. "The only person to (like) that comment was Member Noonan. He did not provide any response to Frank C. besides encouraging the hateful, threatening speech with his like. Screenshots have been taken, and I can provide them to you. Email me at talahclower@gmail.com for screenshots. This type of violence is abhorrent. A public figure of DuPage County should not have responded to that cruel-worded comment..." Or sorry, "should have responded to that cruel-worded comment only to shut him down, which was not the case. I demand the DuPage County Board put out a public statement condemning civilian violence against protesters of any sort, and be transparent with the public about how you will be proceeding with Shawn Noonan." That concludes that comment. Next comment is from Catherine Nash of Lombard. "As a DuPage..." It's about Member Noonan. "As a DuPage County resident, I would like to express my concern regarding DuPage County Board Member Noonan supporting hateful, threatening comments from other citizens. On May 30, 2020, Member Noonan posted a link to the Chicago Police scanner on his public Facebook page. Under that link, a Frank C. commented, quote, 'Shawn, as awful as it sounds, until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the street for the wolves, there is no message law-abiding people and the officers that protect them can send to these terrorists to instill fear and good behavior in them.'" This famed Frank C. also commented, quote, "Send me a text if this gets close to Downer Grove, so I can grab a couple extra mags." The commenter notes in parentheses, "Mags are magazine clips for guns." The only person to like either of these comments was Member Noonan. He did not provide any response to Frank C. besides encouraging the hateful and threatening speech with his likes. "Screams have been taken." Being that Member Noonan is not only a board member, but is an active police officer in the Bloomingdale Police, I'm greatly concerned that he supports such speech and that he would encourage a resident to grab a gun with extra bullets. Given the civil unrest that's happening across this country in response to continued police brutality against African-Americans, I am very concerned that activist, active police officer Noonan endorses dangerous vigilante action and hateful racist rhetoric. I encourage the Board to look into this matter and take steps to address this appropriately. As no member or police officer should endorse language inciting violence and killing." That concludes that comment. The next comment is from Megan Cericola, C-E-R-I-C-O-L-A, of Lombard. "Shawn..." Sorry, "Member Shawn Noonan is the comment. "As a DuPage County resident, I am calling for the resignation of Board Member Shawn Noonan. I have deep concern with the recent Facebook posting from Board Member Shawn Noonan supporting hateful and threatening comments of other citizens. On May 30, 2020, Member Noonan posted a link to the Chicago Police scanner on his public Facebook page. Another individual, Frank C., commented, quote, 'Shawn, as awful as it sounds, until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the street for the wolves, there's no message law-abiding people and the officers that protect them can send to these terrorists to instill fear and good behavior in them.'" The only person to like this comment was Member Noonan. With no lack of comment, with no lack of comment, no request to delete, one can only assume by liking that this is an implied agreement. This is deeply concerning, and as he is a board member, but also appalling is that he is also a Bloomingdale Police Officer, is sworn to protect and serve, and that he's supporting and encouraging the shooting of individuals. Shawn Noonan does not represent this community and does not respect all citizens. If our country stands with their citizens... They will join me in the call for Shawn Noonan's resignation from the DuPage County Board. That concludes her comment. Next comment is from Quinn Murphy in Lombard regarding Shawn Noonan's social media misconduct. It states, "As a fellow resident of DuPage County, I would like to express my concerns regarding Board Member Shawn Noonan supporting hateful and threatening comments from other citizens. On May 30, 2020, Member Noonan posted a link to the Chicago Police scanner on his Facebook page. Under that link, a Frank C. commented, 'Shawn, as awful as it sounds, until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the street for the wolves, there's no message law-abiding people and the officers that protect them can send to these terrorists to instill fear and good behavior in them.'" The only person to like that comment was Member Noonan. He did not provide any response to Frank C. besides encouraging the hateful, threatening speech with his likes. "Screams have been taken." Being that Member Noonan is not only a board member, but also an active police officer for the Bloomingdale Police, I'm greatly concerned that he supports such speech. Member Noonan has indicated that more than once that he is interested in speaking with me directly regarding the need for immediate action to be taken for drastic anti-racist policing reform in DuPage County, but so far, he has failed to do so. He did provide me with his phone, telephone number, and I have provided him with mine, but he has failed twice to provide me with a good time to call, so that it is ensured he will answer the phone. I urge the Board Member, the Board, to look into this matter and take steps to address this appropriately. As no member or police officer should endorse language inciting violence and killing." I have two comments here from a Tanya Bootin, B-O-U-T-I-N, of Lombard. It notes that this comment is being resubmitted, as the original comment had a meeting date of yesterday, but was intended to be read at today's meeting. "As a DuPage County resident, I would like to express my concern regarding Board Member Shawn Noonan supporting hateful and threatening comments from other citizens. On May 30, Member Noonan posted a link to the Chicago Police scanner on his public Facebook page. Under that link, a Frank C. commented, 'Shawn, as awful as it sounds, until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the street for the wolves, there is no message law-abiding people and officers that protect them can send to these terrorists to instill fear and good behavior in them.'" The only person to like that comment was Member Noonan. He did not provide any response to Frank C. besides encouraging the hateful, threatening speech with his like. "Screams have been taken." Being that Member Noonan is not only a board member, but also an active police officer for the Bloomingdale Police, I'm greatly concerned that he supports such speech. Member Noonan has indicated more than once that he is interested in speaking with me regarding the need for policing, anti-racist policing reform in DuPage County, but so far, he has failed to do so. He did provide me with his phone number, and I have provided him with mine, but he has failed twice to provide me with a good time to call, so that it's ensured he will answer the phone. I urge the Board to look into this matter and take steps to address this appropriately. As no member or police officer should endorse language inciting violence and killing." I guess it appears to be the same comment that was submitted by Quinn Murphy. As far as... I have one more comment from a Jesse Cardella, C-A-R-D-E-L-L-A, says, "Hello, my name is Jesse Cardella. I live in Lombard and wanted to email with a complaint about an officer of yours, Shawn Noonan, who is currently employed by you. Recently endorsed a citizen's comment that (until a few rioters are shot dead and their bodies left in the street for the wolves, there's no message law-abiding people can instill..." I guess it's kind of broken, but ellipsis can ellipsis instill fear and good behavior in them." "No police officer of yours should publicly endorse this type of violent language, even if this is in reference to rioting, looting. I think it's safe to say those wouldn't be crimes worthy of death. This type of behavior does not reflect the standard of character in which we should hold our police officers. Two, frankly, it makes me feel less safe in our community. We demand that Bloomington Police put out a public statement condemning citizens who call for violence to be taken against protesters, and that you seriously consider firing Shawn Noonan. Sincerely, Jessica Cardella in Lombard." That concludes the comments I have received.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege?
Let's conclude the Order of Public Comment first. So, does that conclude all public comments?
That concludes all public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Chair will recognize Member Noonan in accordance with our rules. When a member's name is used or is challenged, the honesty, integrity of the character of that individual is given an opportunity to respond. So with leave of the body, Mr. Noonan, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are certainly living in trying times. As a law enforcement officer, I firmly believe all of us have a responsibility to honor the memory of George Floyd, ensure his family finds justice, and strive towards true equality for all in our country. Up until now, that is where I have placed my focus, whether it be in this boardroom or on duty as a police officer. However, I am compelled to respond to the attacks leveled at me today during public comment, which I suspect are unfortunately grounded in politics more than true questions about my character. I have served on this county board for eight years and served as a law enforcement officer in this community for the past 17 years. I can safely say that I have never had my integrity questioned by anyone to this level in my whole career. The Facebook post quoted today does not contain my words, nor did I write these words. In fact, I condemn those words in the strongest possible terms. I will admit I am not a social media expert, nor do I spend most of my day constantly examining each post like some may do. By selecting a reaction on Facebook to this individual's comment, I was simply trying to indicate to the individual that I had read his comment, similar to how one would respond to a text message with a thumbs up. It does not mean that I agree or condone what he had written. Let me emphatically say that I do not agree with this constituency's comments, and I find them abhorrent. Plain and simple. However, I cannot help but feel sad that instead of spending time discussing how we strive towards equal justice, or how we can institute needed, community-based policing reforms, this county board is instead discussing the semantics of Facebook reactions. And why? Likely because of politics. That is certainly an unfortunate sign of the times, and another example for why good people do not run for office. The past 10 days have been tough on our community and our country. As a law enforcement officer, I can say without a doubt, there are bad cops, just as there are bad actors in any profession. They may be a small number, but they are out there and need to be held accountable. The recent videos we have seen show to the world a bad cop who murdered George Floyd. That murder was sickening. I applaud the individuals who marched peacefully to demand equal justice for all Americans. However, I do not applaud those who further perpetrated injustice on others during these protests, the looters, rioters, even if they did so while protesting injustice themselves. We are a nation of laws that apply equally to every citizen, and that needs to be respected. Anyone who has worked with me knows my character, and that is why I cannot help but think today's comments were political in nature and were opportunistically designed to embarrass someone who is on the ballot in a few short months. I believe these accusations are as opportunistic as the "defund the police" movement we see sweeping the country. This movement is a dangerous and highly-charged reaction from the political extremes that we desperately need to move away from. We do not need to defund the police, a move that would further promote lawlessness and crime. Instead, we need to provide more training to law enforcement and ensure they have a better understanding and obtain the trust of everyone they police, regardless of skin color. Instead of spending any more time discussing social media semantics, I would suggest this body refocus its attention on the items that matter most, such as striving for equality and justice for all. I also would support passing a resolution to tell the residents of DuPage County that we stand against defunding the police, stand in support of providing law enforcement more training, and charge this board with taking the first initial steps to begin finding community-based solutions to ensure maximum trust is built between DuPage County citizens and law enforcement. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public comment, and that concludes Mr. Noonan's statement. We move on to the next Order of Business entitled Consent.
So moved.
With a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Zay?
Aye.
Chairman?
Yes? On the Order of Consent?
Yes, on the Order...
Mr. Chairman? Forgive me. With leave of the body, I'm recognizing Member Desart on the Order of Consent. I'm sorry. There was a second. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, on item C, I would like to make an amendment. I would... I was at the meeting at 9:20 that morning that we had a special call. Meeting was for 9:30, and I was on the call at 9:20. So I was early to the meeting, but it shows in the minutes that I arrived at 9:44. And while I was early to the meeting, and I did have some Wi-Fi connection issues, I would like the minutes to reflect that I was on time to the meeting. So if we could make that change-
I don't see a problem, I don't see a problem with that at all with, with, let the record reflect, we can correct that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mounts to a Scrivener's error. Please, Member Ozog, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the item of Minutes, 7B, I would like to amend under New Business on the package, on our packet, page 44, I would like it to reflect that, I'd like it to state, quote, "Member Ozog, along with five other members, requested that reduction of the size of the board be, appear on the agenda."
It doesn't sound like it's problematic to me at this first blush, but I suppose, if you'd put it, so Connor, how do you want to resolve this? Maybe, Member Ozog, I just want to make sure I understand, are you saying that you would like to retroactively amend what the agenda said? Or would you like some sort of notation to appear in the minutes?
I would like it to appear in the minutes, I guess, I, whatever. It did not appear, and I did contact the chairman through a letter with five other signatures, and I would like that to appear. Amend the, amend the agenda under New Business.
Member, Member Ozog, I don't believe you can amend an agenda retroactively.
Okay, in that case, let's put it into the, put it into the, the body of the language that talks about new business. There's a statement there in the Minutes that talks about X commented, Y commented, Z commented, and I'd like it added there that Member Ozog, along with five other members, requested that reduction of the size of the board appear on the agenda.
But is that, would that be in the Minutes? Did you, did you say that at that time? I mean, was that really part of the Minutes?
I did, I did refer to the fact that I had brought this forward.
Okay, and that's not reflected in the Minutes? Because I do remember-
No.
You made a point somewhere into the discussion-
Yeah, it was mentioned in your original comments. I can't amend your comments, but I would like to have this added to the Minutes where all that stated is the numerous board members who made comments on this issue.
Okay, so would you state exactly what it is you'd like to, so I just, for the record here, and we can, somebody make a notation?
I would like, I would like it to state, "Member Ozog, along with five other members, requested that reduction of the size of the board be, or excuse me, appear on the agenda."
Mr. Zay?
Yes, Member Ozog, we're trying to do this on the fly. Is it okay if we just pull item B and we make those corrections and bring it back at the next county board meeting? Would that be okay? And then obviously-
Hey, why don't we do that?
That would be acceptable.
The clerk's the one who does the minutes, so we can talk to the clerk's office and get something in there.
Okay, that would be acceptable, thank you.
Right, we'll remove item B, and then we'll relook at-
All right, so with leave of the body, we're going to remove item B for further review and consideration of Member Ozog's revision. All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, the ayes have, the items removed, so we'll consider it for next time around.
Thank you.
Very good, okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Member Desart?
Uh, Member Ozog was talking over while you were talking, Chairman, so I didn't hear how my issue was resolved.
Uh, I think we accommodated your request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the order of consent, items A through G excluding B. Is that correct? Okay, all those, and, member, we have our deputy clerk, do you want to take the roll, please, on that motion? Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? The consent items minus item B is adopted. We move on to the order of finance. Member Bob Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move approval of FIR 37420, acceptance and appropriation of additional funding in light of an amount of $25,000.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Okay, the consent, the items, the item A is adopted. Member Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37420, resolution approving a grant agreement with Metropolitan Family Services-
Second.
Favorable roll. Leave. And a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted. Member Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37620, placing names on payroll.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, I'd like to get a motion and a second first. Okay, there's a motion and a second, and let the record reflect that Member Zay has left the room. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
No.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Okay, the consent, the items, the item A is adopted. Member Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 38020, resolution approving a grant agreement with Metropolitan Family Services-
Second.
Favorable roll. Leave. And a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted. Member Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37620, recommendation for the approval of payment to the DuPage County Health Department for reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses.
Second most favorable. There's been a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37920, recommendation for the approval of payment to the DuPage County Health Department for reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses in the amount of $335,547.60.
Second most favorable.
Leave?
Leave is granted. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37720, recommendation, approval of intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and DuPage County Health Department for reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses.
Second most favorable. There's been a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37920, recommendation for the approval of payment to the DuPage County Health Department for reimbursement of COVID-19 eligible expenses in the amount of $335,547.60.
Second most favorable.
Leave?
Leave is granted. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIR 37820, as amended in the Finance Committee, for approval of issue of payments to small businesses and independent contractors under the Small Business Relief Grant Fund Program.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kuduski is seeking recognition.
Yeah, we had some discussion in Finance, and I would, I support this program, but I would like to see if we could, or amend it to approve all of the small businesses with the exception of the C3 and C6 organizations and take those separately in a vote.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Further discussion?
Chairman?
Yeah, it was voted down in Finance. Oh, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, we had some discussion of this during Finance about whether nonprofits were included in some small business loan program or not. I took some time in between our, our five minutes or so we had to take a look at the resolution we passed, and it does not mention nonprofits as being one of the eligible entities in the small business loans. So I just want to point that out to the, to the board.
Yeah, I think there's no language that precludes it either. I mean, it's, it's pretty, you know, it's not as prescriptive as you would think, so further discussion-
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, this is Brian Kuduski again. I just had some issues with travel sports programs that put in for this when we got small businesses that are losing business, having people laid off, and, you know, we have a lot, dozens if not hundreds of travel programs in DuPage that can put in for this program. I'm, I'm just not sure that's what we really intend.
Okay, further discussion, Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. I, the parsing of the non-for-profits, I think includes some of our Chamber of Commerce boards, and I know in our district, the Western DuPage Chamber, because they were not eligible for those funds, they took $3,000 from the PPE, which made them ineligible for this program, and essentially, our chamber is dead now. So to exclude, if we get into the, you know, excluding non-for-profits, I'm not really in favor of the soccer leagues, but if we're going to lump those all together with our Chamber of Commerce, I think that's going to hurt business, so I would not be in favor of excluding non-for-profits from this.
Okay, further discussion, Member Renahan?
You know, just to be clear, if we're going to include nonprofits, that's great, but let's just make sure that we're consistent on Tuesday Page and everywhere else, either, you know, they're included or not, let's just make sure we're being fair, because it is not on the Tuesday Page website.
Did you have a chance to talk to Member, or Mr. Bedeloff? Did he offer testimony in Finance today? Because I know that there was a very thorough vetting process. Further discussion, Member Hart?
On that point, Mr. Chairman, I actually had the same question about nonprofit eligibility the day that we voted on this package, and I called Greg Bedeloff, he was very accessible, and he gave me the answer. So, again, I think all of us just need to make sure that we're tapping into all of the resources at our disposal.
Okay. Further discussion, Member Renahan?
I just want to point out, you know, the resolution doesn't say nonprofits. Maybe the resolution should have said that to begin with. You know, that's my point. If we're going to agree to something, let's make sure we're clear, and we have all the language included.
Okay. Member Elliott, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of including the six non-for-profit entities on these, one of them in particular Buffalo Theater Ensemble, which is auxiliary to the College of DuPage, is, it's just sort of an outstanding community enterprise, so I'm in favor of keeping them. But I guess I have kind of a question, is this a discussion we're having on whether to amend the, the underlying motion?
Right, I'm not clear, Member Kuduski initiated this discussion, I'm not-
I just asked for an amendment, just, I support this small business one, I'd like to vote for all the businesses except the six, just take them separately, I'm sure it'll pass, because it passed Finance, I just, because I want to vote for it, but I don't want to vote for the six that are in there.
Are you making a motion to exclude?
I did, I made a motion, I'm not sure I heard a second from anybody, so, but, yes, I did.
Well, I never really heard you make a motion, so.
Second, second.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Chaplain, so, Member Kuduski is moving that these six non-for-profits be excluded, and that they do not receive their funding, and that Member Chaplain is seconding that motion as-
No, Mr. Chairman, I would like to just have them voted separately, we'll vote for all of them but the six, and then just take the next six on a second vote. Just parcel them out.
I think that's an amendment.
Yeah, that's what the amendment I made.
Well, I'm not clear on what your motion is.
Because they, yeah. If somebody could just explain to me, maybe, Member Renahan could explain to me, what, what is the issue here with including nonprofits? I'm not clear on that.
Including or excluding, what do you mean?
Or excluding nonprofits, like, what, what is the problem?
So, Member Renahan, Member Covert wants to know why you want to exclude nonprofits.
Okay, that was actually, uh, Member Kuduski's suggestion to exclude the nonprofits. I'm just trying to abide by the, the resolution that we approved. It does, and also, the Tuesday Page website does not indicate nonprofits to be amenable to this particular program. It says small businesses, that's a different tax status, so I'm just trying to stay within the rules of the resolution that we passed back in May. That's all, that's my point.
Okay, all right, so, Member Kuduski, why don't you enlighten us? Where would you like us to go here? What's your motion? Member Kuduski, are you there?
Looks like his image froze. And he's gone. We, we hashed this out in Finance, Mr. Chairman, if, just, since my motion, maybe I can just articulate it.
I don't have a clearly stated motion within acceptable Roberts Rules of Order, I don't understand exactly what he wants us to do, so, so is he seeking to amend the resolution to exclude? I, I'm not clear, so, and he's not here, there you are, Member Kuduski.
Sorry, I lost connection. I just, as I just made a, we voted in Finance, businesses, and then we took the six, C3, C6s on a second vote. That's all I wanted to do, because I want to support all the businesses, but I want to vote no on the six. So is the-
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on this resolution, Member Kuduski. So you haven't stated a motion that's recognized under our rules, so, you know, you can vote yes or no, so, I mean, is, is that, I mean, I, I'm at a loss to know how to proceed otherwise in, in the absence of a-
Can we just pull the six C3s and C, the six entities that are C3s and C6s off, and vote on everybody else, and then take those separately?
Oh my God.
The same thing if we have two issues on, now we've done it before, we ask somebody to, to vote on somebody, you pull one name off, or you pull something off, vote on everything and do the second vote. If you don't want to do it, it's fine, I'll just vote on the, the whole thing.
Member Desart, Member Desart seeking recognition.
If I may, I think that, um, Member Kuduski is just asking to bifurcate the vote, voting for the businesses and the nonprofits separately.
Divide the questions to divide the question? Okay, so he wants to divide the question, okay, so, Member Kuduski, would you state your motion? Everyone else is trying to state it for you, can you please help us here?
I would like for the, let's see, the resolution FIR 037820, the approval of payments to the small businesses, to all small businesses excluding the C3s and C6s, and I would take a second motion to, for the approval of those.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to divide the question and to take a vote first and foremost on the small businesses that don't include non-for-profit small businesses. first and foremost on the small businesses that don't include non-for-profit small businesses. So have I articulated that properly, Mr. Kuduski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
No.
Noonan. Ozog. Somebody's got to mute your microphone, whoever's got background noise there, please. Please, would you start the roll call again, Mr. Clerk? And please, board members, please turn off background noise or mute your, your microphones when we're taking a roll call, unless it's time to vote. Please, Mr. Clerk, please start at the top with the roll call. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
No.
Noonan.
No.
Ozog.
I'm sorry, is this for the small businesses?
It's, it's a vote to amend.
Okay, aye.
Pachowski.
No.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
No.
Selman.
No.
Tornatori.
No.
Zay.
No.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
No.
Eckhoff.
No.
Elliott.
No.
Hart.
No.
Healy.
No.
Five voting aye, thirteen voting nay. Motion to divide the question fails. Okay, now can we move to the question?
Somebody needs to put their microphone on mute.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Okay. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. FIR 38120, recommendation for the approval of an agreement between DuPage County Fair Association and the County of DuPage for the use of the fairgrounds for emergency COVID-19 services.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Larson. A fine report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On to the next order of business, ETSB, member Sean Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval on ETSR 4220, resolution to adopt the agreement between the Emergency Telephone System Board of DuPage County and the County of DuPage to provide reimbursement to DuPage ETSB for federal CARES Act funds.
A motion and a second, member clerk, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, member Noonan. On to the order of health and human services, member Pete Diciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to combine items A and B on the Health and Human Services agenda. They're both.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The items are combined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on HHSP 12820, recommendation to all steel in the amount of $28,695 for social distancing for our care center. It's office equipment. And I move on item 19-20-471, HHSP 1112A-20, resolution for insight public sector for Lenovo ThinkPad laptops in the amount of $35,658. All grant funded, CSPG.
Second. Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The items are adopted. Thank you, Mr. Healy. On to the order of public works, member Jim Healy. All those in favor say aye. Those nay. The ayes have it. The items are.
Mr. Chairman, we cannot hear him on the video. I think his mic is not on.
That was a motion to combine items A and B.
And there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of 2020-125, recommendation for approval of a contract, LAL Limited, replacement of four return activated sludge electric valves, payment of claims for public works and facilities, and item number B, which is PWP 16220, an agreement with Corello Engineers for details of the scanned up master plan implementation.
Second. An emotion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The items are adopted. Thank you, Mr. Healy. On to the order of stormwater, member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMP 16120, contract issued to scarce in the amount of $75,000 for youth-based quality education services.
An emotion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
That was a good thing you did that. Okay, so the resolution is adopted. Thank you, member Hart. On to the next order of business, transportation, member Don Pachowski.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DTR 33820, awarding resolution to shorter asphalt services for the Lidle Township 2020 Road Maintenance Program for low bid of $802,855.
Second.
An emotion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Just say aye.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I am. I move to approve DTR 37220, letter of intent between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
I'd like to combine agenda items C, D, and E, which are all approvals.
Second.
Second. An emotion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I got to put them out first. Voice vote?
Leave is granted.
All right. Then I would move to approve DTP 15820, approval of contract to Snap-on Incorporated for Snap-on tools and diagnostic treatment not to exceed $100,000. Move to approve DTP 15920, approval of contract to Genuine Parts, DBA NAPA Auto Parts for automotive repair and replacement parts, not to exceed $150,000. And move to approve DTP 1620, contract to AT&amp;T Corp. for telecommunications, not to exceed $45,000.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave, leave is granted.
I would move to combine and approve agenda items F, G, and H, which are all amendments to resolution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The items are combined. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed, Mr. Pachowski. Move to approve, change order DTP 4815, amendment to a resolution issued to Santa Cruz Associates for Professional Right-of-Way Negotiation Services. Move to approve amendment to DTR 367A19, renewal of a membership between the County of DuPage and Julie. And move to approve amendment DTR 9068-18, amendment to.
Second most favorable roll.
Local public agency agreement.
Leave is granted. Mr. Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I move to combine and approve agenda items I through N, which are all travel for necessary certifications and inspections that need, necessary for our employees.
There's been a motion to combine and approve items I through N. All those in favor say aye.
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 I think, Mr. Chairman, member Selman had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Member Selman.
Thank you. Just a brief question. I know these are a little farther out and we're hoping that COVID should be calmer by then, but I just want to confirm that we can get expenses back if, in case in October, we can't allow people to travel.
Yes, and we've already had this on the agenda before, which was polls, so the answer is yes to that. And we have to do it now because the registration is starting.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
All right. Nothing else. I would move to approve agenda item I, overnight travel for the heavy equipment crew leader to travel to Eppingham, Illinois for October 4th through October 9th. J, author J overnight travel, the heavy equipment crew leader to travel to Eppingham, Illinois from October 4th through October 9th. K is authorization overnight travel for heavy equipment crew leader to travel to Eppingham from October 4th through October 9th. And L is authorization for overnight travel for the heavy equipment leader to attend travel to Eppingham from October 4th through October 9th. And L is authorization for overnight travel for the heavy equipment leader to attend travel to Eppingham from October 4th through October 9th. M authorizes overnight travel as heavy equipment crew leader to Eppingham, Illinois for October 4th through the 9th. And then authorization for travel for vehicle maintenance crew leader to Eppingham, Illinois for October 4th through October 9th.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski, a fine report. A lot of folks are going to be in Eppingham. Member Ekoff is seeking recognition.
Mr. Chairman, I neglected to discharge JPS before we voted on that, so if we could go back to that.
Okay, so with leave of the body, we'd like to recognize Member Ekoff on an item of business that we didn't address previously. Please proceed. Hearing no objection, please proceed, Mr. Ekoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to discharge JPS Committee so that we can...
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. The item is discharged. Please describe.
Now I would move to approve JPS 163-20 recommendation for the contract to Dr. Tara Fulmer.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Kuduski. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ekoff. Your resolution is adopted. That concludes our committee reports. We move on to the next item of business entitled "Old Business." Old Business. Were you seeking recognition? The young... Okay, so on the order of old business, Member Covert.
Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize Member Hart today for his compassionate leadership. Last Tuesday, after... I'm hearing a lot of echo.
Yes, would the members please be courteous enough and mute your microphones so that others can talk without interruption? Please proceed, Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was saying I would like to recognize Member Hart today for his compassionate leadership. Nobody wants me to recognize Member Hart today, so I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on. Last Tuesday, after peaceful demonstrations, the city of Naperville was hit by riots and looting, which left my city broken and a mess. Member Hart came out all the way from his district to help clean up our downtown area. He made us feel hopeful and cared for. And I just want to say thank you, Member Hart, and you go above and beyond, so thank you.
Very nice, very nice. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Old Business. We were asking if it was new business. You want to go with... On the order of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I see on our agenda that we are going to discuss the proposal to reduce the size of the DuPage County Board, and I would like to offer for the wording for the referendum that we discussed last time, should the size of the DuPage County Board be reduced from three members to two members per district?
Sounds pretty good. Yeah, yeah, there's a prescribed process, as you well know, and we have to work with our state's attorney and the rules that govern how we approach this, but that's a good suggestion. Any further discussion? Mr. Healy.
I would agree. After 20 years, I would love to see the state's attorney draft a resolution that would reduce the size of the county board from 18 to 12 and bring it back to the next meeting of the county board on, I think it's June 23rd. That's all I would need to say on this issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Member Ozog.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the state's attorney to consider the wording that I gave because it is possible that the number of districts could be changed at some point in the future. So again, I'm suggesting, quote, "Should the size of the DuPage County Board be reduced from three members to two members per district?" And I'd like the state's attorney to review that. The other thing I'd like the state's attorney to advise us about is the timeframe that we need to follow in order to get this on the November 3rd election ballot.
Got it. Member Healy.
I'm going to have to respectfully disagree. My concern with that is that they may find people who say, okay, well, we want to go to 20 districts or something of that nature, and you would end up having more people. So I think I would rather set the number and say reducing down from 18 to 12, which is what we've been talking about, if they have, if they only, you know, no more than 12 or something along those lines. I think anything else, you leave it open for interpretation. If the county board went to 16 districts, you could have 32 county board members.
Actually, Mr. Chairman?
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I believe state statute now limits the size of any board to 18. And on top of that, we could add both language, I suppose, but I think that we need the state's attorney to weigh in. A referendum like this was put on the ballot in 2016 by McHenry County, and I think that the state's attorney will be able to tell us what the appropriate wording is. Thank you.
Further discussion, Member Dan Pachowski.
You know, we were talking about McHenry County. McHenry County went from 24 to 18, and their population is 308,760. We are already the smallest county board of all the collar counties. Kane, 515,000 people, 24. Lake, 703,021. Will, 677,026 members. We are the smallest county board. Of all counties over 100,000 in population, Kendall County, 114,000, has 10. Everyone else, and it's something I got from staff, has in excess of 18. So yes, I agree. Let's listen to voters in McHenry because they said 18 was a great number. 18 was a great number for a county one-third our size.
Okay, further discussion, further discussion. Member Healy.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may, McLean County, Virginia, 2 million-plus people, seven members. Tarrant County, Texas, 2 million-plus people, five members. LA County, California, 10 million-plus people, five members. It depends on the people who are elected, and I believe that if you reduce the number of people, you're going to elect really good people. You don't need this many people to run the board. And I think that's something that the, you know, that's something we can debate when we get it on the ballot in November.
Member Ozog.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Pach... Or, Member Pachowski, I understand your points and your comments, but I think the time to have the actual discussion of this is when the state's attorney has told us what the appropriate language would be, and then we can have a discussion of whether we will put said resolution on the ballot. I'll also point out, while I know that the number is different in McHenry County, about 90% of their electorate decided that it should be reduced. I understand size, population, et cetera, but as Mr. Healy pointed out, there are many cases where smaller boards do exist and exist sufficiently. Thank you.
Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little, I guess, anxious about the idea of us giving instruction to our state's attorney when this board doesn't seem to have much of a consensus at all about, are we looking at number of districts? Are we looking at number of members? I think we really need to spend our time getting our, you know, sea legs together as a board to understand sizing in comparison to other counties, whether or not we're similar to our peers, whether or not we're really comparable to McLean, Virginia, which I would argue we're not. So I think we need a lot more preparation and to do the legwork as a board before we throw a question at our voters and ask them to figure it out. I just think that is not a good democratic process.
I agree. Member Elliott.
I want to echo and repeat everything that Member Selman just said. This is a pretty significant issue, and we're talking about having the state's attorney write something up without real clear direction from the board, but also without any real information for the board. The last two meetings, I feel like Member Ozog and Member Healy have come equipped with some comparative data, but I've seen, as far as I know, really nothing in writing. I've seen no real analysis of what the duties of those boards are. I mean, my guess is McHenry County probably has a lot more unincorporated territory than we do, but a much smaller population. I think Member Healy just recited some relatively urban counties, but I also don't quite know what the unincorporated area, what the dues those county boards are. I've heard county board members, I think from District 1 in particular, both Republican and Democratic, suggesting that they have concerns that if we reduce the size of the board, there may be inadequate capacity to handle the workload. I just feel like before we do anything on this, we really ought to get some information, and before we propose a structural change, I just don't feel like things like McHenry County did A, or I think Tarrant County, that might have been one of the other counties, did B, so we should do B. That doesn't strike me as sufficient information to make this determination.
Well, yes, and I appreciate those remarks, Member Elliott, and we've always tried to really study issues and be informed with good data before we make significant decisions like this. So I see Member Chaplin is seeking recognition.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. You know, part of our ACT initiative is reducing the size and scope of government, right? So I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I think it's a very good conversation to have. I was under the impression after our last discussion at the last meeting that we were going to, that it was, we were going to put the question on the ballot. That's what I took from that last meeting. And now people are asking for more information, which I'm always, I always want to give board members more information. So maybe what we can do is have staff prepare the information that's requested and have it at our next board meeting, because I believe we have until like August to put this question on the ballot. Is that correct? Does anybody know? I think it's like 90 days.
Yeah, we have till August 17th, so, you know, we can take time to study this and prepare a proper informative piece of policy alternatives for our board members to consider more thoughtfully, and then we can give clear instructions to the state's attorney. But we don't want to put the cart before the horse, is what I hear people saying. Member Ozog, I see your hand up in front of your camera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as I talked about last time, we are looking at a savings, a direct savings of over $300,000, and I think, looking at what our constituents have been enduring in the past few months and job loss, et cetera, I think that this is something that we can put before our constituents, our voters, and have them decide if they are interested in doing this motion. If you want to take, you know, at least have the state's attorney tell us what language would be appropriate, but I think that this would be a very, a large goodwill measure, and I think that we would be able to consolidate committee work. I think that we could handle it, and we are being paid a significant salary, and I think that this is an appropriate move.
Okay, thank you, Member Ozog. Member Tornatori has been patiently seeking recognition here, and he's hiding, I can't see him over there, so behind Ekoff, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regardless of what we do, last time, Member Healy mentioned Tarrant County, Texas. I looked it up. There are only four people in that county on the board, but they each make $175,000, and they have significant staffs. So I just, it's important to know that there's, there may be counties with fewer county board members, but the budget might not be the same.
Further discussion, Member Elliott was seeking recognition.
Yeah, I, there's lots of things that we can do to save money for the taxpayers, and, you know, I proposed one of them. One of them would be for people who run for office promising not to take health benefits, actually honor those promises. That's one of them. There are many others. I get that this would probably pass if it went before the voters, but I do think that we, as a county board, have an obligation to make sure that we do our homework before we propose something to the voters, because we got elected to pay attention to these issues, to make wise and thoughtful analysis of these issues, and so I don't want to present anything to the voters for an up or down until we are convinced it's a good idea. And frankly, we don't even have the first glimmer of whether this is a good idea or not. I might wind up supporting this. I'm very open to this, but we can't just come in and say, hey, we have a short deadline, let's just get it done, and recite names of other counties. We have to have a thoughtful and deliberate process.
Okay, so let's, so I hear you loud and clear, Member Elliott, Member Selman, others who've discussed this. We have a little bit of time, so, you know, finding out, gathering more information, maybe a working group would be a good idea. Member Ozog, I see you seeking recognition again. Anything new to add?
Yes, I'd like to add in response to Mr. Elliott's comments, or Member Elliott. We did discuss this issue, and we decided at a 16 to 2 vote that we would be able to access the health care that all employees of the county are able to access. As for our status, I think that, first of all, I also want to restate that we are indeed paying, like all our employees pay, for a good portion of our health care. However, in this case, I would like us to talk to the state's attorney, see what might be appropriate, and then have a board discussion over who might be in favor of it, but I have a feeling our voters might be very much in favor of it. Thank you.
But certainly, Member Ozog, you, given that we have the time, we can, like, examine the issue a little more carefully, gather data, be better informed about it, and then give instruction to the state's attorney. Doesn't that seem like a logical process?
As long as it's not much longer than maybe our next, perhaps our next meeting. Is that possible? Can we do that?
Okay.
Because August is going to be here before we know it.
Okay. Member Selman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to get back to the $300,000 savings issue, because I think that really gets to the crux of, Member Elliott's point, that we don't have nearly enough facts. So like Member Tornatori mentioned, on boards where less people are representative, that means you have staff probably, and it also means you're compensated at a higher amount. Currently, and probably, you know, our communities don't know this, none of us have staff except the chairman, because he has an executive office. You know, we're doing all the work on our own, we're responding to our own constituents, we're reaching out to staff who works in the departments, who has a whole department to run, to get our options. So I think the salary discussion is one we should have, and I don't think our voters would vote to reduce our board knowing it would probably come with a pay raise. I don't think that's, if we gave them that information, I think they'd make a different choice. I also think, and I would love the state's attorney, you know, or someone to get us this information, whether it's a working group or however, I worry about if we reduce to two people, particularly in our district, whether or not these really remain part-time jobs, and whether or not that we have an IMRF concern, because as my understanding, you know, I'm not eligible as to when I joined and my salary and all of that, and that's a great thing, because I'm only 30 years old. If I were eligible for a pension, that's a liability that this county will, you know, knock on wood, carry for many decades. Instead, you get three representatives working at part-time with lower wages and no staff to give you the representation you need. So I think that really just gets to the crux of, we need to formalize and get some more information so that we can even tell our voters what, if there would be savings, because I just, I think we're not positive on that.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Member Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I brought this issue up a couple of times last year, you know, six, eight months ago. I've had a couple of discussions with you back last year. I was hoping at some point between last year and before we got to today that we would possibly have a group together and get information. I agree with Board Member Elliott, you know, we need to get a lot of information here. He's saying he may support, you know, reducing it. On the other hand, I get more information, I may, you know, oppose reducing it, but I wanted to get the discussion started, you know, a long time ago, because the more information you have, the better decision you can make. So I'm all for, let's get information, let's see what, you know, what referendum questions may be, you know, how it will work, but we need to start doing it, not just having a few discussions every 15 minutes, that old business or new business, and whether that's, you know, you putting a group of a few members together, or just asking staff to get the stuff for us so we can read it prior to a meeting, but, you know, I think we do need a lot more information that everybody can have before we make a decision on what we want to do. Thank you.
Okay, I understand. The message is loud and clear. Okay, any further discussion on this order of business?
Mr. Chairman, we can't hear Mr. Pachowski.
You're, start over. That was really brilliant, Don.
I don't want this to be a rushed judgment. I don't want people to know we're just doing this to cut a little salary and payroll. I don't know enough. We should have more dialogue and more information, and again, it had bipartisan support to get on those six, and it's bipartisan support to stay what we're at, because we don't have enough information. I don't think this has to be done in the next meeting, because I haven't heard enough. I don't know what Healy's talking about, and I don't know what other options are out there or what we should be doing, but we're bigger than six states, we have a half a billion-dollar budget, and we run well. There's nothing wrong with the way we've done it, but we're moving too fast. Let's talk about all the options, because the electorate has a right to know, but we should be knowing what we're putting on and why we're doing it as well. Thank you.
Member Chaplin.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So to address Member Pachowski, I think maybe what Member Ozog means is that start getting the information at our next meeting. You know, we don't want to put it off till the last hour, so let's start getting information into the board members and then, you know, maybe have another discussion, but let's start getting the information in now, because I agree, I always like more information, too, and the more information we have, the better decisions we'll make. So I think that's what, we're not talking about voting on it tomorrow or next week. I think we're talking about getting the information and starting another conversation. That's my understanding.
I agree with you, Member Chaplin. We can gather information, gather the facts, gather the data, as we're mindful of dates and deadlines. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to Member Pachowski's comments, first of all, there is a time element here, because if we have to get something on, if we are going to go ahead with a referendum, it does have to be decided by August. So what I'd like to propose is that the chairman consider appointing a bipartisan committee to discuss this in the next four to six weeks with a conversation about whether we will go ahead with this in August. And I'd like to see myself and Mr. Healy appointed to this, and then whoever else you may feel has an interest or expresses an interest, because you've said yourself that you had this intention 10 years ago when you were first elected, so this is not a new idea, but I, it does have to be decided by August, because it needs to be on this ballot so that it would be, it would be on the 2022 election ballot, how many actual members we would have, once the census is applied and the districts are set for 2022. So there is a time element here. So I would propose that you appoint a committee, and as I said, I'd like to see Mr. Healy and myself on this. I am totally open to discussing the points that Selman has, Member Selman has brought up, Mr. Pachowski, but it is a time-sensitive issue. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so yeah, I, your suggestion is well-received. I think that's the direction that we should move. You certainly should be a part of this effort, and I think Mr. Healy should be as well. So why don't I reflect on it, talk to our team here a little bit, and just, then I can, the idea of forming a working group to study it, to gather information, is a good one. There seems to be good consensus of opinion about that approach, and so then, yeah, so let's, 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 let's consider that, and let's sort of move down that path together, all right? That sounds like a good, some good ideas there, all right? Thank you very much, Member Ozog and Member Chaplin, Member Elliott, Member Pachowski... Pacharski? Pachowski? You were brilliant, Don. Yes, so anything else on the order of old business? Anyone else have anything they want to discuss? Member Diciani.
Yeah, I just wanted to wrap up. I mentioned that, you know, when I was mayor, we had 14 all, there'd been almost the size of this county board, and it was oftentimes where it was challenging dealing with a lot of people, but challenging on me as a mayor, but, you know, if the people, the referendum we're talking about putting on is a non-binding referendum, it doesn't really have a whole lot of value other than perception. I would, you know, I always said if the people of Elmhurst wanted seven all, they're going to set a 14, they would petition it, and it would be a binding referendum. There would actually be a vote that actually by the people. We're driving this politically, and to me, that's not fair.
I understand.
If this was really about the people, there's petition drives that could be done, and they could put a binding referendum that we'd have to follow. So changing the form of government really has to come from the people and not the politicians. I think that's, that puts us in a tough spot. I think, you know, if people want less representation, they have the petition mechanism to do a binding referendum, and I don't see a groundswell of people asking for a binding referendum at this time. So to me, this seems to be more internal and political, and I'm challenged by that, because I think we're politically putting in a position to take representation away from our voters, and it's, in my opinion, a bad thing. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, do you want to offer some illuminating information that may...
Just for the record, reducing the size of the county board cannot be accomplished by referendum. The Illinois Superior Court dealt with that years ago in the P.O.R. illegal women voters case. So to be clear, this is not a binding referendum that you are considering. You are considering an advisory referendum. That advisory referendum takes its position, takes its power from statute, and it's the power of the board to determine the number of its members. So to be clear, it cannot be a binding referendum to reduce the number of board members.
And all the more reason why I think it's imperative that we gather information, that we look at different models, that we try to figure out what's appropriate for DuPage County, that we're responsible as the elected leaders. Yeah, if you put a question before the voters and you ask them if they want to eliminate some size of a board or some board members, I understand how politics works.
Member Ozog, further discussion?
With all due respect, Mr. Diciani, or Member Diciani, I personally, anecdotally, received a great deal of support after the publicity that was, when the story was in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, and if we really are going to follow the ACT initiative, consolidation, and consolidation at all levels of government, and I believe it's, it would be efficient, and we would save money, and I think that the idea of having a committee discuss this over the next four to six weeks is where we should be at today. Thank you.
Okay, Member Zay, to conclude the discussion. All right, well, you know what, is, okay, anybody on this subject matter, so we can, like, wrap it up a little bit?
I would like to get back to my other, my part-time job, which is actually my other job, since the last eight weeks, I've been spending more time on county board than I have in our manufacturing business, but...
Okay, I understand. So seeing no further, anyone seeking recognition on the order of old business?
Yes, Member Chaplin.
I think Member Chaplin is, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, Member Chaplin, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Yeah, Member Chaplin here?
Yes, please proceed. I'm sorry, I can't see.
Thank you, Chairman. So I just wanted to thank you for, I thought it was a great idea to have the Complete Count Committee start those conversations on diversity and inclusion, so that is, I really want to thank you for that, because I know I've sent you some emails, you know, about bringing in the community, and that was a great tool to use. So I'm looking forward to attending those, and I hope a lot of the board members will be there. And I also wanted to just take this moment to talk about, because inclusion and diversity are a little bit different than some of the systemic institutional issues that we may have. So that's why, you know, I'm glad that you not allowed me, that you encouraged me to work with Margaret Ewing about contacting Dr. Adrian Coleman, working on some kind of workshops for the board and the county staff, because I think those are two separate issues, but I do want to thank you for that, because I thought that was a great, a great tool to use to get this conversation started.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and there are other people that do provide those services, so if...
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Or anyone, right, but thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Happy to work with you, Liz, anytime. Anything further on the order of old business? Old business. Member Hart.
Keep the meeting going, but I just wanted to thank Member Covert for her very kind words. You know, I view it as doing my job, and I know a lot of other members on this board also were involved in the community over the last week as we were dealing with these very difficult events that our country was going through. And I just want to echo Member Chaplin as well. I think the Complete Count Committee is a great place to continue this discussion, and Member Covert, I think you're the perfect person to lead it. So thank you for your, for your leadership. Real briefly, too, I just wanted to acknowledge the team from WorkNet and Member Tim Elliott on the ramp-up award for the NACO, NACO Award that was received by the county. This is the second opioid-related program that's won a NACO Achievement Award in the last year, so I wanted to thank staff and all of the board for their support on those programs. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Further discussion, anyone seeking recognition on the order of old business? Seeing none, hearing none. We move to the order of business entitled new business. Member Rutledge.
Thank you Chairman, I'm going to try to keep this brief.
Please take your time. This is fine.
Thank you. Aside from my efforts to get hem keeping, hem keeping ordinance in our county, I've been working with a couple of different things over the last week that kind of all funnel into the same problem. And so I'm seeking advice, ideas. Number one is I'm thrilled that we are finally going to be opening a testing site, but I have been approached by state representatives that are concerned that the communities that have been most hardest hit with this virus may not have the car that will get them to the testing site and allow them to be tested because you have to be in a car. The second issue is COVID gets closer and closer to all of us, I think, as this goes on. Right now I have some dear, dear old friends that are fighting this. They have a small manufacturing plant in Carroll Stream that got COVID. Husband that runs the business brought it home to the wife. He's now in intensive care. She, she avoided hospitalization but has turned to advocacy and what she is trying to bring out is a couple of things, but one is that it was the scariest, most lonely time she'd ever spent in her life and that, that we're going to need some mental health help for those people on the, on the recovery side of things. Number two is an issue with the hospital, I won't bring that up, but number three is in light of that, let's get people who have gone through it and recovered to reach back to those people that are going through COVID problems right now for a couple of reasons. One, for the mental health aspect, but number two, to develop a pool of people that have recovered successfully and, and urge those people to give plasma because that is the treatment that has helped her husband. So with both of those things in mind, well, back up to the, the first issue is that if we could develop a pool of people that have antibodies to the virus that could assist people that, that need testing or need some support in hospitals, it's a hard thing to get people to step up and say, yeah, yeah, I'll take somebody who thinks they've got COVID through a testing lane in my car. And I understand the challenge about that, but I've talked to Shafali at Givin DuPage. She's talked about, you know, putting a volunteer group together for that. I've talked to Ashley, helped put me in charge with public transportation. So I'm looking for ways to, we know more about COVID now. We know, you know, I know people don't want to be singled out for that, but I think that having gone through such a terrible moment in their lives, a lot of those people are going to turn to advocacy and I think we need to start harvesting those people to help. So that's what I'm looking for is anybody that has advice or information that could help this, help me figure out a way to do this. I would love to hear from each and all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member Rutledge. Member Diciani.
Yeah, Member Rutledge, accord and the, you know, the need for blood, a lot of blood has been given, a lot of blood has depleted our blood bank. So we, we really need to give blood and I think the antibody testing that is available in a private side, maybe we can look at NHS and public, private opportunities where we could actually work with some of these private entities and identify those who have had or seem to have the antibody where we can only give blood normally, but also potentially give an antibody blood as well. So I'll, 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 I'll put that on NHS as an item.
As far as I know, the science is not settled on that. So you gotta be careful. You can't offer false hope.
But we need blood to begin with, so.
Well, giving blood, of course, but I mean, the, the hope of antibodies is not, is not clear that that is. Further discussion, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items. First, just wanted to alert the board, former county board member Paul DeZurkis, who served from 1998 to 2002, passed away on Friday. I know he had been battling cancer, so Paul's from District Four, nice guy, unfortunately had a long battle with cancer. So our wishes, our thoughts go out to his family. And also someone who I wanted to thank who's been really helpful is our deputy clerk, Adam. We haven't seen the other clerk in three months, but you have been here through thick and thin and I know I've gotten many calls from constituents about marriage licenses and you've been very grateful to help me out on those and, you know, people, when they're getting married, with everything going on, they're coming down to weeks before their wedding and they can't get a marriage license and you've stepped in and helped a lot. So thank you for all your efforts here the last three months. Obviously it's not a good time and I'm hoping, we haven't seen the clerk, I hope she, everything's okay. And so, you know, we'll see her when things get back to normal, I hope.
Yeah, I just thank you very much, Member Zay, for your kind words. Yes, Clerk Kaczmarek is also actively working and doing a lot on behalf of the office, but I do appreciate you thanking me for my work as well.
Further discussion, Member Tornatori, followed by Member Covert, followed by Member Ozog, followed by Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The traffic courts and the court building was open for the first time yesterday. I wanted to congratulate Chief Judge Guerin, the clerk, Clerk Ketchrubus, as well as Sheriff Menjrik and his staff. There were six municipalities, three courtrooms open at virtually the same time. There was social distancing within the courtroom, people waiting outside in the hallways. As one case was called, they ushered another person in. Everybody was working in concert and it really went very smoothly. So congratulations to all of them, I think were on, on, on the way back in the courthouse.
Sounds good, sounds good. Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did, we did okay on time today with the county board, 12:45, so, you know, so far not.
I'm in no hurry. I'm here all day.
Not, not too bad. But, you know, two weeks ago, we got out of here at 2:30 and today.
Usually I see the dentist, a tooth hurt, tooth hurting.
And, you know, we went, we went 45 minutes over in finance too and a lot of people wanted to, wanted to talk and I don't want to stifle anybody, but, you know, I just want to remind board members to just keep it courteous and be mindful. Please ask your questions before the meeting if you need any clarification. Everybody's available. We could email staff, we could ask these questions before we come to the meeting because there, most people here, no offense, but most people here have jobs. I mean, I, we have court tomorrow, we have stuff to do, people have jobs that we need to go to. We could be here all day talking about county board stuff and, and that would be really exciting, but in reality, you know, we, we have to get back to work. I would ask, I mean, in the past, I've seen some board members that have made a big deal over technical issues and, and, and then when they vote on it, they vote for the thing they actually argued against, you know? So it just seems like a waste of time and, and making a mockery of, of this board. So I would just ask for a little bit more respect and courteousness of time and, I don't know, it, it just has to kind of be under control so we don't have this meeting go till four. It's just, it's kind of getting out of hand.
Thank you, Member Covert. Further discussion, Member Ozog. Your arm get tired? You don't have to hold it up all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, with all due respect to the comments Member Covert just made, I never make a mockery of anything that we do on this board. So I need to set that record straight. If I'm asking questions, it's because I feel that's the thing I need to do to make the best decision. Also, I'd like to make a comment about Mr. Zay's remarks to Mr. Johnson. I also thank him for what he's been doing here. But to make a comment that the clerk has not been here for three months, we are in a pandemic of the sort that we've never seen. I am 61 years old and if I choose to not be at this meeting due to health issues, my age, I'm sorry, but to call out the clerk like she hasn't been here or on the job, if Mr. Zay needs to speak to her, email her, call her, but that was a completely unnecessary comment against the clerk and I know that she's been active and has been doing her job. So thank you again, Mr. Johnson, but I think that we really don't need to have that kind of pot shot taken against our other local officials. Thank you.
Member Ozog, I mean, please be fair about it, you know, please, that's.
Excuse me, excuse me, we haven't seen her for three months is not being fair. Compliment Mr. Johnson on the job he's done, but that is not fair.
The only elected official who hasn't been here on the dais for three months, you think it's completely inappropriate for Members Zay to even point that out?
Yes, I do, because you don't know what age or medical issues. All of us have had a right for the past three months to attend these meetings, to attend these meetings remotely, okay? And I don't need to have people commenting that I am not present today. If some of you have chosen to be present, that's fine. But no, I don't believe that's a fair shot to make and you don't know what her reasons are that Mr. Johnson has been doing this. So I think it's a cheap shot and I would like to see that not happen again. Thank you.
It doesn't bother me that she's not here. I trust that she's making the judgment call and she's responsible and accountable to the voters, but to, to castigate Mr. Zay for simply inquiring about it, that we haven't seen her in three months, you think that that's, that's inappropriate, really?
He didn't inquire, he simply stated that she hasn't been here and the inference is that she's not been doing her job. I'm sorry, it's pretty clear to see that and if you disagree with me, that's certainly your prerogative, but I don't think we need to take pot shots like that or make a mockery. I think we need to be more respectful to each other. Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I'd like to comment on that, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, Member Chaplin. We were headed toward adjournment, so.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Chairman. So yeah, I, I do want to talk first about an organization. It's My Mile for Ben and it's raising awareness on mental health and you can go on their website. I'll send out the information and maybe to all the board members, but Ben was a young, a young gentleman from Downers Grove who committed suicide and this event is held yearly and this year, since they can't do the, have the walk or the run, you know, like we normally would, they're asking people to cover a mile for Ben from now until August 1st. So anybody, if they want to walk a mile, jog a mile, you know, whatever, and then sign up on their website to support this great event, that would be appreciated. And then secondly, I just want to talk to, just quickly about Member Covert's comments because, you know, in finance, we had very good dialogue today and I thought everybody was very respectful. I didn't think anybody was out of line with their questions and I thought they were all very good questions and the more questions we ask, the better. I'm kind of troubled that people don't have time to serve on this board and you know what? If it takes us till five o'clock to get our questions answered and to get the board business done, that's our priority. We set out to be elected officials and if you don't have time or you don't want to put the time in, maybe you should rethink what you're doing on this board because I am very troubled by these comments. We are elected, we have, we are, our one job here is to show up at this board meeting one day a week and I know Member Zay works very hard on Stormwater. I know he does and I know he puts in a lot of hours and times and I, I appreciate his efforts and I appreciate his work, but when, you know, if, some days we're going to have long meetings and, and right now we're in a pandemic, we have the pandemic, we have the, you know, the, all the other issues going on with that, we have some real important business here and I appreciate everyone's questions and I thought, I thought the meeting both today, both during county board and finance was very respectful and I don't know where those off comments are coming from and I'm troubled.
Well, I, I think she was talking about a productive use of time. I, I think she's very devoted and will make whatever time commitment is necessary, but the time that we do commit to our business here, we should be efficient and we should be productive and, and not engage in pettiness. So, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just want to go on what Member Covert said. You know, this job is what you put into it. I read a lot of people today, we had talked about OEM and what OEM was sending out and wondering what the sheriff was doing. And I can guarantee you, and the chairman knows, I talked to the sheriff probably four or five times a day for the last two weeks on what was going on because I was calling him to find out what was going on. I wasn't waiting for someone to send me an email to tell me what was going on. I was concerned what was going on in our county. He was letting me know. I was doing the work. If I have a question on the budget or something that's on the agenda, I call our staff prior so I can get a good answer, not put them on the spot there. I kind of like do my homework before the meetings and do that. And so we're not like a gotcha thing, like what about this or what about that? We talked about, you know, we don't have staff here in the room anymore, so we're trying to communicate them via Zoom. So again, we're talking about productive time. When we ask the same question 10 times, I mean, that's the thing. We just, we can assume as board members, things are going to be handed to us, budgets are going to be handed to us and someone's going to explain it to us or sheriff's going to call me and going to tell me what's going on. Sometimes you have to go out and grab those things and do it yourself. That's what being a board member is. Maybe just because I'm old and honorary, I don't know what it is, but I do the work and again, the sheriff calls, call him, I know he's busy, I'll text him, hey, everything okay? Can I do anything to help? You know, calls back, no, we're working here and working there. We're on with mayors and managers in District Six. I can't tell you the, the village managers, what praise they had for our county from the health department to the sheriff's office, to our staff, keeping them updated on what's going on, not only what had happened in the last week with all the protests throughout the county, but with the COVID going on at the same time. And they had great words to say and they all know, I've talked to many of my mayors. Again, we got to talk and work and when Member Covert says, you know, we got to be productive with our time, we do. And we can't do the gotcha thing and try to do things at meetings, be productive with our time and move forward.
Further discussion, Member Elliott, seeking recognition.
All I wanted to say is there's an irony in that we're now extending the length of our meeting by arguing that we're unnecessarily extending the length of the meeting. And I think all points are made on all sides and unless somebody has something else, I would respectfully move that we adjourn the meeting.
Well, we, we do have Member Ozog. Yes, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, Mr. Zay, if all of us were calling the sheriff in the past week, couple of weeks, 10 days, 18 of us times three, I believe that's 54 calls a day from board members, we all do our job in various ways, but open discussion like we had today during the finance committee should be encouraged and it was not repetitive and it was a respectful meeting. So let's, let's stop with the low digs. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That concludes a very productive conversation. Oh, oh my God, I thought you were saying goodbye to me.
I was just waiting.
All right. Looking at my screen here. Member Ekoff, to continue this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As unaccustomed as I am to coming to the defense of Mr. Zay, I did want to say that I did not think his comments regarding the clerk were disrespectful. I thought he was thanking Adam for being here, he was asking where the clerk was and I would think in this era of transparency that we talk about all the time, that maybe she would have wanted to make a statement during the last three months as to where she was, because I think if one of us had missed three months worth of meetings at a job where she, the past clerks have always been and she had been before, it, it would have been appropriate to do instead of leave us wondering. So I don't think what Mr. Zay said was inappropriate, probably what I said right now is more offensive to her than what Mr. Zay said, but that's the way it goes.
Okay. Legitimate inquiry. Member Covert.
This is my one last comment. I just want to respond to Member Chaplin's comment because I think it is offensive how I've been, you know, anytime I make a suggestion, you know, she jumps down my throat. This has been going on for, since last year, since the first day I was here and these little microaggressions need to stop because if you're going to, if you're going to march in a parade and hold up a sign of Black Lives Matter, then pay a little respect to the only minority county board member. Thanks.
Okay. On that note, maybe we can wrap it up.
Member Chaplin gets to respond.
Yes, she does.
I do get to respond.
All right, Member Chaplin.
Member Covert, I, I, today's meetings went very well and there was no, all the questions, everybody was being respectful. You threw the bomb today saying we weren't respectful. I'm not going to take you always throwing people under the bus, saying that we're picking on you when we disagree with you. That is absolutely not true. You know, I, I, I have not, I actually commend, thank the chairman for giving you the Complete Count Committee, but your comments today were off and I don't know what, what possessed you to say that we were being disrespectful in committee when we, when I thought we had a very good board meeting. And you know what? The past few months, the board meetings have been very good. I think people have been respectful. I think we've really found a nice groove and, you know, we're working bipartisantly and for those comments to come out today, just totally unnecessary. And I really, I really take aim at you, always trying to call people bullies and picking on you and that is not one minute true, not the truth at all. I would happily work with you and I'm happy to work with you on the Complete Count Committee with this, with all the issues in our community, but your comments today threw the flame and they were unnecessary.
Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Member Ozog. We want to hear from you, Mary. Please proceed, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of microaggression, Member Covert, you are the first person who said today that this, some of these issues we have are frivolous, that we are wasting time, that we need to do our homework first is sort of the, the inference in general, and I don't believe that's what we experienced in this meeting today. in general. And I don't believe that's what we experienced in this meeting today. And staff is not going to be able to answer every question that 18 people have. And sometimes the discussion comes as we are talking and people bring up various points. So there was no aggression, micro, macro, or any other side towards you. But you brought it up in the first place to say that we were wasting time. And I think that's really inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Member Elliott.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, get out of here, really? Okay. Member Sam Tornatori. Oh, Members Zay bought us lunch. Very nice. Okay. So I think, I hope, I pray. Oh, Member Desart, forgive me.
Yeah, I just want to compliment everybody on the great discussion we had in finance. I mean, going into today's finance meeting, I had looked at those equity adjustments in the sheriff's department. And I, I was shocked at how high they were. And I did talk to people about it. I talked to several, I, I called, I talked to, thinking of bipartisanship, I, I spoke with Member Kudjuski about it. I spoke, I called Bob Larson about a different issue. So, I mean, doing the homework is very important. But I went into today's meeting thinking I would vote no for those equity adjustments. But then I listened. I listened to my board colleagues ask questions. I listened to Sheriff Mendrick talk about why these were appropriate. And because of our discussion, again, I went into the board meeting this morning, the finance meeting, thinking I was going to vote no. But thanks to those productive questions, your questions, my questions, the sheriff answering the questions, I voted yes for those equity adjustments. So my own point is, Chairman, that these discussions are very valuable. Thank you.
Okay. Member Ozog, were you seeking recognition? No, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. So that concludes our discussion under new business. I'm informed we have nothing to come before us on executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, June 23 at 10 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Have it, meeting adjourned.